Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Committee of the Whole Meeting, October 14th, 2015. Could we have roll call, please?
We have seven present, one presiding, and four absent.
Thank you, Colleen. I let the record show that Commissioners Palmer, Sorich, Perdude, Olin, and Anderson are absent in their excuse tonight. Would you join us with Commissioner Henderson with the pledge and the prayer?
For Mardi Gras, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis. A report of the chair, I'll forego that. We have a full meeting tonight, and it's pretty exciting. We have a couple of presentations that should be interesting to listen to. And so we'll begin with one. Section one is Presentation Communication Number 15-453. Pamela Haxby-Cody, Executive Director of the Butte Local Development Corporation, requesting a presentation this evening regarding the marketing program update. Pam, the floor is yours.
Good evening. I'm Pam Haxby-Cody, the Executive Director of the Butte Local Development Corporation. I'm here with my partner, Andy Zidienak, and he's going to take part of this program. We're going to double do it, huh? Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come here and speak before you. But before I get started, I have to tell you how much I love the angle parking in Uptown Butte. It is great. I've heard great things from people. We look very progressive. It looks clean and neat and tidy. For someone that's got OCD, I really, really like it. So congratulations, folks. Good work. Okay, now I can get started. You're welcome. Thanks, Dave. Good job, everybody. This really does make us look like a wonderfully progressive city and doing lots of things. So thank you. So we're here today to give you a short report on what the Butte Economic Development Coordinating Council has accomplished to date. And a lot of that is because of you, your generosity. So go ahead, Karen. Ah, there you go. So there's a beautiful photo of the entrance into Montana Tech. And Andy's going to talk in a little bit about what he's looking at doing up there with his committee. Go ahead. There you go. Yeah, I don't know what happened to our words. Karen, let me just read. Let me go into the words. The words disappeared. We've been having problems with this stuff. So we are a group that has come together in a spirit of collaboration and cooperation. We're creating a shared vision and shared message about how to grow our economy and enhance our community. We understand each other. We trust each other. We respect each other, and we're open to each other's thoughts and ideas. And what we are, wow, this was a really great presentation, so I'm not sure what happened to everything. That's okay. That's why we have a printed version. We are individuals who really care about our place in our community. We're just like you. In fact, some of you have been at some of our meetings. We are organizations with amazing and talented people dedicated to advancing our community. We are diverse in our organizations, as we are in our individuals, with specific missions in mind. We're all interested in making this beautiful place we call Butte the best place that it can be. We're all in this together, and we're already making great progress. And I'm hoping this whole, ah, ta-da! This is the one I worked so hard on, guys. You have no idea how this was hard to put together. This is who we are. We're the Butte Local Development Corporation, the Chamber. We are the Butte School District, the National Center for Healthcare Informatics, Headframe Spirits, Main Street, Uptown Butte. We've got the Burt Mooney Airport in there, Montana Tech Highlands College, Markovich Real Estate, Montana Connections, Kristen and Karen in Butte Silver Bow Commissioners, Markovich Real Estate Highlands, Northwestern Energy, Headwaters, St. James, a whole plethora of us, the Port of Montana. And we're all getting together to advance your initiatives. So we have a vision, and we have a mission. And our vision is to be the most effective and innovative and collaborative economic and community development group to help grow Butte. And our mission is to make sure that Butte continues to be the community of choice for tourists, businesses, and residents. We have some objectives behind that vision. And by the way, I didn't make any of this stuff up. This was done by consensus with this wonderful group. Andy and Karen and Kristen helped facilitate how we got to this point. So some of our objectives are to retain and attract young professionals and entrepreneurs because if we don't, we're all going to be like this. We're going to all have gray hair, and we're not going to have anybody to help take care of us, right? We want to keep these young professionals here. We want to help make them happy. So we're going to do that by promoting an attractable and affordable lifestyle and career opportunities that we have here in Butte. And we're going to create a marketing plan to market our community to local, regional, national, and international entrepreneurs and young innovators. And we're going to promote our local growing entrepreneurs, companies, businesses, and innovators. And then we're going to recruit new businesses to Butte. And that's really hard to do. That's not easy to do. You've got to be patient. It happens once in a while, but we're getting there. We've got some wins. And we're going to help do this by creating a marketing plan that highlights our community's infrastructure, our wonderful transportation, our great angle parking network, our workforce, incentive programs for business and expansion and recruitment, our two-gigabit ring that's around Butte. We have a lot of things that are very unique to this community that other communities want. In fact, I'm going to go off script a little bit here. I was in Kalispell last week doing PTAC training, Procurement Technical Assistant Training, which was very dry, very boring. But I missed this wonderful event that was last Thursday night out at MSC with that Karen and Kristen and Andy and Helen are put on relative to the Montana Manufacturing Consortium. I can never get that right. That news story played all over the state of Montana. When I went to breakfast in the morning with those individuals, they said, "Oh, my God, you guys are doing amazing things. How'd you get that done?" So we are doing great and innovative things here in this town, and we can't wait to tell you more about that program in a month. And I promise the words will be up there. Okay. So we have some strategies to get to where we need to go. So we formed some working groups because we couldn't all do this by ourselves collectively or even individually. We had to form these groups. We formed an integrated marketing group, and that group is going to identify how all of us members of the coordinating council can implement an integrated marketing strategy so that we're not all off going in different directions, so that we have something and that the look and feel seems the same, that we're doing a coordinated effort, but still having our own identities in those things. And then that group also is going to, they've assessed and are assessing existing marketing plans and strategies that each one of these organizations has and are pursuing. Then we have a marketing planning group, and they identify initial work that needed to develop a comprehensive marketing plan and what that would cost and what that would look like. And then we have the funders, the capital campaign group. How are we going to pay for all of this? And so they're going to implement a capital campaign program so that we can raise more funds to leverage what you've already given us. And then we've got a research group because you can't get anything done unless somebody's doing that hard work right behind the scenes, and they're providing the research and the data for all of our working groups so that we know what we're talking about when we're talking about something that we're doing. And then we have a management group, and that's people like me who are OCD that tries to get everybody going in the same direction in these working groups to make sure that they're coordinating and that process is being made and progress is being made. So our working groups don't show up there. It's invisible, but I have them here. We have an integrated marketing group, and Christian Rosa is the chair of that group, Julie Jacksaw, Rick Edwards, me, Maria Porchevina, George Everett, Kathy Fasso, Ray Rogers, Matt Vincent. You know all these people, right? They're your friends and neighbors. We have the marketing group, and Karen is the chair of that group. Andy, Eddie Zimpel, Julia Crane, Marco Lucic, Tracy O'Neil, Barbie Durham, Chris Ackerman, Dave Palmer. We have a capital campaign group, Jim Cambich, myself, Kevin Dennehy, Tim Kober, Judy Jonart, Pam Chamberlain, and Ray Rogers. And then we have three other working groups. We've got a research working group. We have Andy working behind the scenes, turning all the data for us, along with Karen and Kristen, Julia Crane, and Julie Jacksaw. And then we have a transportation committee that's doing amazing things, and I'm going to let Andy talk about that. But Andy chairs that group. Ray Rogers is on that, Doris Gruk Group, Nick Sanford, Julia Crane, Maria, Bill Markovich. And then the management committee, those that like to push paper, me, Ray Rogers, Karen, Kristen, and Andy. So a little bit about what this integrated marketing group has done. Boy, I am so glad I have an actual copy of this. Doesn't look like we've done a lot, but we really have. The first goal was to implement an integrated marketing strategy. And the activity underneath that was to assess existing marketing plans and strategies. And what we've already accomplished to date in a very short period of time is we've gathered all the marketing materials from members of the coordinating council. That was a pretty big deal. I mean, that was a lot of work that went into that. And then we identified other entities in the community that also market outside of our community and got all them, gathered all that data. And then they identified positive marketing opportunities. And some of the accomplishments that we've done up until now is through your generous support and the support of Chief Executive Matt Vincent, we've received $20,000 for our efforts. That's a big deal. We've acquired social media and press release services. We're implementing a Butte elevated campaign in our local hotels, and we've got banners on buildings and for the festival season and in some of our marketing materials and on our websites. And we're creating the Best of Butte in Southwest Montana News Feed. And that'll be where we can feature our own homegrown entrepreneurs, innovators, elected officials, people doing good things here in Butte. And so one of the things we've got to do best is market to ourselves, too. So now I have some artwork here that we've taken on, and you'll see a lot more of this. And this was done by your own Julia Crane. And I'm sure you all know Julia. This is pretty amazing stuff. You can take a look at that. She's got one that's called Business Elevated and Summer Elevated. And then we've got another one that's called Urban Elevated. And if you see Julia, let her know. Tell her that you like her artwork. This was, this was, this is very, this is state-of-the-art stuff. She could rival some of these big marketing companies. And guess what? Didn't cost anything, right? So this is a big deal. And then we have, I'm sure you've seen it, we had this up for the festival season, and Kristen got this taken care of. This banner was placed at Second Edition Books on Montana Street. If you haven't seen it, take a look at it. I think they're going to take it down shortly, and you folks are going to host it at the Civic Center. So thank you for that. It'll protect it from the weather, and then we'll get it back out on the streets with some more next year. Wow. So some of our marketing group, working group things that have happened so far is we have a goal to develop a comprehensive marketing plan that would support a good capital campaign. We've conducted comparable regional research. Andy's going to get up and talk about some of the research that they've done.
Andy Zidienak, Butte Local Development, 4400 Black Tail Lane. Am I supposed to do that part for the record? But on the marketing group, what we did was, the first, one of the tasks we did was we got a survey from, that we had posted at Montana Tech through the chancellor for the students that were graduating. We asked a series of questions just to find out what they liked about being Butte or what the opportunities were in Butte. Probably one of the things we found out that if there is a job opportunity, well, this is probably the most relevant piece of data we got of it, if there's a job opportunity, they'd stay. So we just know that if we create opportunity, we can keep the graduates instead of leaving the area, they'll stay here. So we, that's one of the things that's just telling us, you know, we got to, that's what we got to do if we're going to grow our younger demographic. That's what we were trying to target. That's probably one of our biggest goals, is to try to make opportunities to keep our young professionals here. From that survey, we're also going to go out and target the alumni. We're basically looking at the expats, trying to see what, find out from them, do they want to come back? What would bring them back? So that's the next phase of this survey. We're going to try to get that out here this fall, working through the chancellor of Montana Tech. But go after that large network, just to find out, get information from them to find out how we can bring them home. We're also doing another survey that is looking at the present workforce, just to find out more about what they're looking for, where they're looking at the opportunities, what they might need for training. We're going to try to take advantage of this information because workforce development is becoming key for recruitment to bring businesses in. So we want to see if we do have the skilled workforce to be able to use that as a recruiting tool to bring in businesses. But we're also looking at our local businesses because we just want to make sure that their needs are being met, that they have the skilled labor force that either they're projecting out or that we'll be able to provide that. So we're looking at that as another survey we're going to take information from, and also we're going to look at some other opportunities to enhance that area, to get the information, and also try to engage our private sector to make sure that we're meeting their needs so that, you know, they have the ability to sustain or maintain or grow. From, we're, another task we're doing under this is what Pam was saying, is a comprehensive marketing plan. But we're trying to make it, we're looking at other communities, similar communities, just to see what they're using, what they're doing, just to see what we have for our competitive advantages, what we also have for our assets, just to make sure that we're targeting the right industry because there's not that many opportunities out there. But when we're going after and we're making sure we're sending the right message, and we hopefully will get them to come here to our community. Another working group, this was formed after we started the Economic Council, but we had an opportunity to go to Bozeman through the Sonora Institute, a group of us, to receive training on its new mobility concepts, just looking at ways to work transportation planning with community development. From that, we applied and received the order to grant through the New Mobility West Program, and this is what, we're looking at a project for enhancement of the West Park Street. These folks will be coming here early in November. We're going to have a series, we're going to schedule a bunch of one-on meetings with many of the community leaders and people that reside on Park Street and also businesses, just to try to get input on how the baby best develop that area. As you all know, that street's planned for reconstruction, road reconstruction, 2000, I don't know what year anymore, 2017, I think it's out to now. But we're going to try to take advantage of that reconstruction investment and look at it with, to enhance that quarter. Mainly, we're, the goal is to increase, enhance the connectivity between Montana Tech and the Uptown, mainly just to try to get the students coming into our Uptown area. So it's been a project that's been talked about for a long time. We're hoping to be able to take advantage of this opportunity to really, really get a good plan together and get something with the community involved.
So really, what we wanted to is thank you for your support. Welcome you to any of our meetings. I'll send you notices. We don't, you know, we're all doing this without marketing degrees. We think we're doing a pretty doggone good job, but we would love you to come. We would love your input. You're 12 really smart individuals, and we would really welcome that. But we just want you to know how much we appreciate the money that you've given us to get this done, and we promise you, you're going to like what you see. So thank you very much. And you know what I'll do? I will email you this beautiful thing that it took me four days to do.
Okay. Before you leave the podium, thank you, Andy and Karen so much, and the other parties involved. A lot of the behind-the-scenes activity. I'm sorry Dave's not here to be able to look because he's in your group. He was pretty instrumental in getting it started, I think, too. And it's just all exciting. I don't know where you get all your energy from.
Well, each other, right? I mean, what we do best in this town is work together. And when we work together, we get so many great things done.
It is contagious. Are there any questions for either Karen, or Pam, or Andy from the council? Okay. Thanks again. We look forward to your next stuff.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Andy.
And keep us in the loop on the emails so we know when you're doing things so we can get involved.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks, sweetheart. Jeez.
All right. Thank you. Section two, Presentation Communication Number 15-456. Karen Burns, Director of Butte Silver Bow Community Development Department, requesting council's authorization for presentations by the recipients of the economic mill levy monies. I asked the vice chair of our Economic Development Committee, Dan Foley, to take over here if you wouldn't mind. I appreciate it. Commissioner Foley.
Thank you. Just for a quick update, we traditionally have the Economic Development Mill Levy funding in the fall, which is what's going to take place here next week. We'll implement new bids. Last year, we awarded the funding a later date mainly because we were trying to update the certain criteria in the valuation process. So that's why this is a little later than we normally would have. So, but normally what we do, one of the requirements is to have the groups that receive money to come back and just give us a quick summary or presentation of what they accomplished on their project. Last year, we've had, I'm trying to think here, 13 proposals given to the committee, and we narrowed them down to a certain amount. The total amount of dollar amount was $68,000 that was awarded. So what I'll do here now is I will just go through the list as of, that I have in front of me here, and ask representative for one of their groups to just come up and give us a quick summary. It doesn't have to be anything long. It's just a quick summary of what was accomplished and the success or even the failures of the process. The other thing that we asked, too, if the members are here tonight, I believe you were sent a sort of a project evaluation of how this process went. Again, we're trying to improve the process, so if you did receive that, please return that to us so we can make some improvements for this upcoming year. So further ado, I will ask a representative from the Butte Labor History Center. They received $1,650 from this economic development mill levy.
Dick, just give your name and address for the record, please.
I'm chair, members of the council. My name is Richard Gibson. I live at 301 North Crystal Street, and I'm the treasurer, and I serve on the board of the Butte Labor History Center. And you did give us $1,650. It was quite a bit, by far, the smallest grant that was given, but we were nonetheless very appreciative. It was budgeted in the following ways. We allowed $400 for the nonprofit application, $300 for a professional logo design, $550 for rack cards and brochures, and $400 for an LCD projector to project slideshows and movies and things like that. We did all of those things except for the last one, the last one, the LCD projector. We actually got one donated. So instead of spending money on that, we spent $401 to purchase a film which is called An Injury to One. It is the story of Frank Little. We have shown it several times. We got it with presentation rights. Our nonprofit status was vital for our revenue model, which is for sponsors who donate money to provide for the creation of the primary interpretive displays. These are seven-foot-high by three-foot-wide banners that interpret the labor story of Butte. Being a nonprofit allowed us to leverage this small grant in the following ways. We had a total of 14 banner sponsors at $250. That's $3,500, and we have two more that are pledged. We have plaques that honor unions and individuals as memorials. We have four of those for unions and seven memorials that total $475. Other donations total $1,175. So the total donations is $5,150 with $2,500 pledged. So we leveraged your donation of $1,650 into almost $9,000. Our visitation from June 13th, when we opened, until October 13th was 290. That accounted for a revenue, an entry fee revenue of $1,165. For comparison, the Mayois, in essentially the same timeframe, had 367 regular visitors. So as a startup, we were pretty comparable to the Mayois. We hosted three special events. We had a pre-opening in April, our opening on Minors Union Day, June 13th, and Frank Little's Murder Day on August 1st. And some of those numbers that we counted are in those special event days as well. As an evaluation, we consider our initial startup to be quite a success. With minimal cost, we created a new attraction for Butte that brought nearly 300 people to the center in its first four months. This is not a one-time project, but an ongoing establishment. The startup funding that was provided by the economic mill levy grant was vital to our initial operation, and it has allowed us to become a viable organization. We do appreciate it very much. Thank you. We are now paying rent. We have plans for additional grant applications. We are working with Montana Tech, the communications and display-oriented design folks up there. We will continue to have special events, and we are open throughout the winter as well. So thank you very much. If you have questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Thank you, Dick. Any questions from council? Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it. Proud of a successful endeavor. And before I go any further, I just wanted the record show that Commissioner Anderson did kind of sneak in during our first presentation, so he's here. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
Sorry I was late.
Okay. Commissioner Foley.
Thank you. Next on the list is the Spirit of Columbia Gardens. They were awarded $9,500.
I am Marilyn Patrick. I live at Levin Wathena Drive out on Timber Butte, and I represent the Spirit of Columbia Gardens Carousel Association. We were the recipient of a grant from the Economic Development Council of $9,500. We signed our lease with Butte Silver Bow on July 16th, 20,000, this year, 2015. This negotiated lease allowed us space in Stodden Park so that we could build the carousel facility, and we would have a home at last for the beautifully carved, painted horses and all the trappings associated with the working carousel going around and around and around for all eternity. We held our groundbreaking ceremony on July 29th of 2015, and our building permit was obtained and paid for on August 17th, 2015. The grant that we received allowed the carousel to begin the initial building process. These funds were used to obtain the building permit in the amount of $6,159.38. We purchased rebar and steel for the concrete footings, and that totaled $3,992.55. The carousel continues to use what of funds we have available, and the first round of steel has been placed, and as of today, we have concrete actually poured. So far, all of this work we've done under budget, and in part because of our in-kind donations for materials, labor, and other services. We continue to secure other funding. We've had several grants in the making, but some of those funds aren't available for up to six months from the time that we apply for them and the decisions are made on funding. So at this time, the economic development grant is the only money that we have received. We thank you for the opportunity this evening to bring you the update on this because this is such an important project for the people and the city of Butte. And I put a few pictures here that you can all take a look at on some of the progress in the first round of steel. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Any questions for representative for the Spirit of Columbia Gardens? Okay. Commissioner Foley.
Thank you. The next recipient was Main Street, Uptown Butte, Montana Folk Festival, an amount of $8,500.
Mr. Everett.
Thank you very much, Chairman Shaw, Commissioners. My name is George Everett. My address, where I sleep, is 943 Caledonia, and where I spend most of my time is 66 West Park. I think most of you folks know what I'm talking about. We did receive $8,500 through the Economic Development Mill Levy Fund last year for the Montana Folk Festival. We proposed to use these funds for travel, which we did. I handed out a written report beforehand so that you could see. We have attached invoices and receipts for more than, we spent about $50,000 on travel. So that's the, the short report is, that's how we spent the economic mill levy funds was on travel, to bring performers to Butte for the Montana Folk Festival, which is the main draw for the event. I wanted to take the opportunity, though, to speak a little bit more about the festival and its success this year, and I was hoping we may have, do we have access to the internet, you think? Probably not. Never mind. Go to the internet.
That's okay.
Google Montana Folk Festival.
I'll stick to the... Stick to the plan tonight.
You see what I was talking about. There's a few videos on there. I was going to show just a couple of minutes of a video, but what I'll do is just let you know that as far as the economic impact goes for this, eighty-five hundred dollars, the festival, what I'll focus on, which is with certainty that we know, is that we sent out two hundred and sixty checks after the festival for more than three hundred and forty thousand dollars in the local community, which for about, we had the honor and the privilege of working with about forty to fifty Butte businesses who have benefited from this event being in our area. The benefits go beyond our area to all of southwest Montana and the entire state. But I'll leave it at that, and if you have any questions about the written report, I'd be happy to answer them, or please call me anytime, five six five two two four nine.
George, any questions for George? Thank you. Look forward to.
Thank you very much.
The future. Commissioner Foley.
Thank you. The next one is Butte Historical Society for the amount of two thousand dollars.
Thank you for inviting me to come tonight. I'm Kim Opouse, one oh three Trotter Drive, and I am representing the Butte Historical Society. And I first want to say, go tech. I'm a graduate of tech, so I'm alumni. We were granted two thousand dollars from you, and we are currently holding it hostage. We have not spent the money. It's used as leverage to try to get additional money from other communities in the southwest Montana heritage area. What we found when we went to the National Park is we went to their project manager, and she unfortunately has two projects of national parks ahead of us. And so what we had to do is we had to take a step back, and that now we need to do a feasibility study on a national heritage area, which is going to be smaller, so it's going to encompass the Andehconda, Butte, Dillon, Whitehall, so it's going to be a much smaller area. Right now, we have the communities on board from these cities, but none of them have the financial backing that we do. And so when I say that we're using this leverage, we are saying, you know, we have already gotten two thousand dollars. If you guys can put into the pot, we can get a representative from the parks to come. And instead of being the project manager like they would for the National Park, what they would do is they would come in and help us develop the project.
Take your papers off the microphone. That's okay. Just on the microphone, right below you. There you go. Thanks.
But anyway, what they would do is they would come up, and they would help us set up the project, and they would develop the timeline for us and start setting up what money we need by a certain time, by what date, what needs to be done first, because that seems to be one of the problems that we're having is there's so many community members that are all for this, because we look at what the tourism could bring in, but it's hard when we don't have the financial backing to spend a lot of money, and that was one of the reasons the National Park won't take a really good look at us, is the two projects that would be ahead of us have already put in quite a bit of money, and they have quite a bit more financial backing. What we have found here is we can ask for the financial backing from some of our big corporations, but they get a little bit leery because of the restrictions that can come from the mining and different areas that we don't want them coming in and telling us what we can and can't do. So they're worried about hunting, just the other aspects of what will happen if we have them come in. So if we have the lady come in and do the minimal project implementation and get us going on a timeline, then it will be more controlled by our organization and then the surrounding communities. And so right now, I wish I could say that we have spent the money, but we don't want to spend it until we know it's going to the actual good use for the project. And so what the goal is now is we're going to try to raise another, we figure it's going to be another two thousand dollars, and we will fly and house someone to come in for probably a good week, and we'll take them around the area and give them a good background of the history, and then they'll put a project plan together for us. And then we can start from square one, and then what they also said is eventually, if we get the heritage area listed, then we can go further and go for the National Park. And so that is all I have for the update.
Thank you, Kim. Questions for Kim? Commissioner Foley.
Thank you. The next recipient was the World Museum of Mining for three thousand four hundred dollars.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Jeanette Coff, fifty-eight, forty-eight Zbar T. Sorry, my paper was spalling. The thirty-four hundred dollars was for a brochure distribution program through Certified Folders for printing and for the distribution. The printing cost came in a little bit under at five thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars. The distribution came in at about fifty-three hundred dollars, plus there was some labor involved in the request. So the total cost of the project turned out to be eleven thousand seven hundred forty dollars. And thanks to TBID, the Southwest Montana Cooperative Marketing Grant, and of course Butte Silver Bow Economic Development Grant, most of the cost was covered. The World Museum did an additional six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So the brochure is still out there. The program is going through the end of May 2016. It's really hard to tell whether or not the brochure helped. We do have a guest login that we request the guests to say where they came from and how they found out about us. There was a small percentage of people that definitely said the brochure. I know that I've talked to a few guests myself that found the brochure throughout Certified Folders. Of course, I did discover the Internet's the big one where people are finding us. So good news is, is through yesterday, comparing numbers to 2014, which was a phenomenal year, we're up fifteen percent in tourism. We've had eighteen thousand seven hundred forty people walk through our door this season, and we still have a few more weeks to go, so with Treat Street in there. So it's been a great season, and thank you.
Good. Awesome. Great news. Anybody else have some questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Foley.
Thank you. The next one is Henri Roth, the Irish Festival for the amount of eight thousand dollars.
Thank you, Commissioner Foley. I was asked by Frank Walsh, our chairman, for the Henri Roth Festival to present tonight. He had a conflict, and he apologizes for not attending. The Henri Roth Festival received eight thousand dollars from the Economic Mill Levy Fund. We had spent one hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars to produce this year's festival. The eight thousand was spent locally with equipment rentals and security. The equipment rentals through sun rental for tents and other equipment that we need to produce the festival, as well as the balance, which was roughly fifteen hundred dollars, went to security for four days. Our festival ended up, we're still closing out the financial statements, which we'll present to council, but we had a loss of roughly two thousand dollars. We had a shutdown on Friday with rain, and we had a tough weekend. It was a pretty tragic weekend for Butte. We buried three youth of esteemed families, so we took quite a hit that weekend at the festival, and we didn't see familiar faces, but we feel we had a successful event. We appreciate the support of this body and the community, and we're already working on plans for next year, so we'll be back next week. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you. Next recipient was the Urban Forestry Board, an amount of seven thousand nine hundred and
Madam Chairman, members of the council, I'm Charlie O'Larry, thirty-sixty Beef Trail Road, Butte, and I'm the chairman of the Urban Forest Board. I'm sure you're all somewhat familiar with our mission. We were created back in nineteen eighty-seven as an advisory board to the council or to the local government in order to try to mitigate the tremendous damage that was done to the urban forest area in Butte from decades of mining and smelting and heap roasting of ores, and it just pretty much wiped out the tree population. So we are more than an advisory board, we're a working board as well, and I'm sure you're familiar with quite a few of our other projects that we're doing in addition to our treebait program, which is what you funded last year. Before I give you the summary, I just want to thank the chief executive and many of his staff, Dave Schultz, Karen Burns, Eddie Randall, Tom Malloy, Kelly Anderson from MSU. All of these people put in so many hours helping us accomplish our goals, and we wouldn't be able to get much done without them, so we sure appreciate that. The Urban Forest Board Treebait Program, Tree Rebait Program, has enjoyed wide popularity among county residents since its inception in 2011. This year was no exception. The dollar amount awarded, seven thousand nine hundred and fifty, was the largest amount provided to the Urban Forest Board so far by the council. At fifty dollars per treebait, that allowed us to provide a hundred and fifty-nine treebait. As before, the vouchers were distributed by the Chamber of Commerce. We take down a whole packet of vouchers, one hundred and sixty-two of them we took down there, figuring a few wouldn't be used, and all of those disappeared in four days. We did, I think, an ad in the papers, mentioned in the paper, the Butte Weekly, some social media stuff. That word got out, and it's been very popular in previous years. People flocked down there and signed up. We had a list where they had to sign in, and they all disappeared within four days. And that demonstrates, I think, the high level of interest by the residents of Butte Silver Bow in planting street trees, boulevard trees, yard trees by their, by their homes. One of the changes that we made on the voucher this year is that we put in a requirement that people had to spend at least a hundred bucks on a tree or trees. What had happened, we got a little feedback from one of the nurseries last year, that a few people were coming in trying to buy a fifty-five-dollar tree and use a fifty-dollar voucher, and so there's not much skin in the game when you do that. And we feel strongly, as you do, about the notion of economic development and having this money turn over some dollars in the community. It's not always dollars coming in from outside, it's turning money over in the, in the community. So we just put in this requirement, you got to spend a hundred bucks at least, and most people, I'll say, spend a lot more than that, because they're buying bigger trees. We just wanted to kind of discourage people from trying to buy a fifty-five-dollar tree. So even though they were buying a tree, that helped our goal as far as greening up Butte, but it wasn't accomplishing your goal very well of economic development. So the requirement, however, did dissuade a number of people from using the voucher at all, or else they lost them, and that necessitated the Urban Forest Board having to extend some of our deadlines. We usually try to get this out of the way by the end of June. We were getting vouchers back from the nurseries by the end of June, but we could see we weren't going to make the hundred and fifty-nine. So we put out a second sort of wave of vouchers utilizing the Wednesday night Farmer's Market down at Stodden Park, which was a success. We set up a little booth there and had people come by, picked up a lot of vouchers. We did have a short waiting list, too, that we called all of those people, got them a voucher. And so unless there are some late submissions from the nurseries, we should end up with a hundred and forty-eight vouchers used. That's only eleven shy of the maximum amount, ninety-three percent utilization. This number still exceeds all previous years, but probably reflects the maximum number that we can expect from the community in any given year. We think we're maybe starting to get a little bit of saturation going out there. We hope if we're funded again next year, we're going to do a little bigger blitz on our advertising, try to get, there's a lot of people out there who still say, "Tree what? Tree what?" They don't understand what treebait is, so there's still a lot of people we need to reach with this idea. And as you know, there's still lots and lots of yards and boulevards that need trees. I do want to mention that the trees, we collected everybody's address. Trees were planted from, you know, Waukerville, Clare out to Terra Verde and other, even in some of the rural areas. So trees are getting planted all over town through this program. Okay, so the nurseries obviously love this program. The three main ones are Wagner's, Marche's, and Buxton. They get the lion's share. Ace Hardware had a little trouble this year. They had kind of late arrival, and they have more limited stock and kind of cheaper trees. They did call us, and we said, "Yeah, get people to buy two trees, and they can use the voucher." So anyway, the other three did quite well, and overall, it was another, another great year for it. So I will take any questions if you have some. If not, I have my remarks here, and also I, I didn't want to do a full-blown presentation, but I have another sheet here I'd invite you to read that outlines all of our other activities. Treebait is just one of many things that we do, and our goals for 2016.
So Charlie, my question, I guess, is a hundred and forty-eight treebait's were given out, so I assume that that's a hundred and forty-eight trees that somebody had to try to plant, and I wondered if you, or I know Kelly, of course, probably offers advice on how to plant a tree properly, but does anyone in the, in your board have any assistance that they provide? Or advice on planting?
Well, we have, our board, which is appointed by the chief executive, we have some pretty talented folks out there. We have some hard workers, you know, strong back, willing hands, but we also have some people with good backgrounds, and Kelly, of course, is a.
Arborist.
No, she's an arborist. She's a landscape architect. And the chief just appointed a new young fellow that works for the Forest Service who has credentials that would fill up the screen there. He's a very sharp guy, and we, a lot, most of us have learned a lot of things, you know, over the years of being on there about planting and trimming, proper soil, amendments to the soil, et cetera, et cetera. So we try to help people any way we can to be successful. It's one thing to plant the tree, another to make it survive and give it enough water and so forth. So yeah, we're there to assist the entire public.
Great project. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. or Madam Chair. Charlie, I was going to ask you the question if you guys had anything to do with the planting of the trees on Elizabeth Warren, but I seen from your list here you did, and I just want to thank you for that. I think that really cleaned up that corridor, and it looks really nice. So thank you guys for what you did there, and is there anything else with that program that people need to be aware of? Can they sponsor a tree or any of that?
Well, let me tell you how, briefly, how successful I was. I heard him say "quickly" three times, so. And the credit goes to Phil Kamak, one of our board members who lives down by there. He was the ramrod behind that project. He went literally door to door, put up cards, sent letters on it. He raised four thousand dollars in the matter of about three weeks from his neighbors, all private money. Every bit of that was paid with, with private money, and we're not done yet. I think we did twenty-eight trees. There's going to be, the rest of the boulevards will all be done next year. All the money's raised. What was your question?
Just if there's anything else with that, then I know people could sponsor a tree, it looked like.
Actually, we've got, we've got plenty of money on that. I don't want to sound rich here, but on that project, that's an earmarked project, we have all, all the money we need. But if you want to make a donation to our street tree program or the whole city, feel free.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Charlie. Commissioner Foley.
Thank you. The next recipient was Advantage Butte for the amount of nineteen thousand dollars.
Good evening. My name is Desiree Shogren. I'm at twenty-eight, twenty-five Kasoot, and I am here on behalf of Advantage Butte. On behalf of our entire board and members, we'd like to thank you for your contribution last year in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars. We actually have not spent that, because that was all earmarked for this 2015-2016 tournament season. So what we have coming up here in a couple of weeks is kicking off is our Western Sea Divisional Volleyball, which we've put a thousand dollars towards. Then we have in February twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh, we have two events. We have the Western Sea Divisional Boys-Girls Basketball and the Western A Boys and Girls Super Divisional Basketball. Then on March ninth through the twelfth, we have State B Boys-Girls Basketball. So between the four events... So between the four events, that's $19,000. And what we're estimating that to come back to our community is over $1.5 million in economic impact. So that's your hotels, your retail, restaurants, the works. How this process kind of works for us as an organization, we meet every third Tuesday once a month, and with that, it's a group of members as well as an executive board. So we're approached, say like the Civic Center, the Mac Center, Montana Tech, whoever it is that's wanting to go out to get a bid a tournament through the Montana High School Association, comes to us and will ask for our support. So with that, the executive board will meet, discuss that, bring it to the full board, the membership, and then we approve funding at that point to assist them. We don't pay for the whole event, but we assist them financially so in hopes we get the event and we don't lose money at the same time. Okay? So it's coming. It's going to be a great year.
Thank you, Desiree. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Sure you will spend that money wisely. Commissioner Foley?
Thank you. And last, the recipients is Evel Knievel Days for an amount of $8,000.
Tim? Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Tim Seymour, 1812 Utah. I'm the Vice President of Evel Knievel Days. Evel Knievel Days applied for the Butte Silver Bowl Council Commissioners Economic Development Mill Levy, funds in the amount of $10,000 towards the purchase of the Thrillbillies, which was a new act for us in 2015. We were thrilled when we were awarded $8,000 to go towards that event. I can tell you, assuming everyone received a copy of our letter here, but kind of just off the cuff and real quick, that event cost $28,000 to put on. It was a lot of money, but having done this for a couple of years now, that group of individuals that came in was some of the most professional and the nicest people I've ever met. And to do what they did for our crowd, it was a huge success. And we couldn't have done it without you and your help. And we look forward to having more events of that caliber in the upcoming season. Learning through this process as we go, you know, you can kind of hire anybody to do a job, I guess, but when you find somebody that's really qualified to do what they do, as were those people, I think it was money that was well-spent. The crowds were huge at that particular event every time they were on, and the response from those crowds was overwhelmingly positive. So I would like to just thank everybody and for your time and patience on that.
Thank you. Any questions for Tim? Okay, thanks, Tim. Appreciate that. Commissioner Foley? That was the end of that series, okay? Well, that concludes our presentation of the Economic Development Mill Levy money that was given out this last season. A lot of exciting projects, a whole variety of things from trees to festivals to carousels, and it's just great. I really think it's money well-spent, and I just want to personally thank our Economic Development Committee and the group that read, kind of brought up to date our criteria and the methods by which we do this. It'll be a little smoother, a little earlier this year than last year, but I want to thank you all for coming tonight. So that moves us into our public comment area on any item that is on tonight's agenda. So it was an opportunity for anyone with a public comment to come to one of our microphones and give us their name and address and make a comment on items only on tonight's agenda. Anybody want to make a comment?
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, my name is John Sinnerd. I am the lobbyist for the Montana Landlord Association, and I am here to discuss Section 3 and Section 4 on 15-7 and 15-8, and inform the Commission in regards to what the state of Montana has done in regards to one of Senator Sessos' bills, Senate Bill 320, that basically did something similar to what you're trying to do. And also inform the Commission that in 19, let's see, the hearing was held in 2002 on April 30th, and it was held in Judge Henson's district out of Missoula. And basically what that was is the city of Missoula created a similar ordinance to what you're trying to do, or at least trying to draft forward with. And I would very seriously caution you in regards to what Judge Henson had basically said, that it's unconstitutional and basically under the state of Montana as well as the U.S. Constitution. And that was City of Missoula versus, or I should say, Western Montana Proprietary Association, it's supposed to be Property Association, versus City of Missoula. So as your attorney is trying to draft something, I would caution, take a look at this, determine it's unconstitutional. Also, under 7-1-111, powers denied to self-governing, or self-government powers, limited by the state. If you look at subsection 13, "Any power that applies to or affects landlords as defined in 7024-103," and this is everything that landlords have to go through in the state of Montana, and they're regulated pretty heavily by the state of Montana. "When that power is intended to license landlords or to regulate their activities with regards to tenants beyond what is provided in Title 70, Chapters 24 and 25, this subsection is not intended to restrict a local government's ability to require landlords to comply with ordinances which you've already put in place, or provisions that are applicable to all other businesses or residents within that local government." Basically creates an equal playing field for everybody. What the city of Missoula tried to do is basically take landlords and certain businesses and put them on their own pedestal and start to charge them, $7.50 a unit, so on and so forth. And if you're trying to license a landlord, it is strictly prohibited by the state of Montana. And if you take a look at, and I would like to pass this out if I may?
Yes, you may. Thank you.
So what this is, basically gives you a 7-1-111, as well as Senate Bill 320, which was killed in Senate, or in the Senate Local Government Committee. And with that, when you look at it, in order to actually have the authority to do this, you have to change Section 13 under 7-1-111, basically to include ordinances or resolutions adopted as provided in 5060-106. And then through that, Senator Sessos modified that with the help of somebody who I'm not sure of, but basically giving you the authority to do that, but the bill was killed. So I think this is going a little bit far-reaching in regards to licensing landlords. I understand what the issues are in Butte with your dilapidated buildings. I believe that you have the authority, as it even said in this court case, that you do have the authority to do certain things, as well as in this court case, and there's another one that you need to look at, is basically it said in the court case on page 3, item number 4, and this is what was in the city ordinance in Missoula. "It shall be the duty of the city treasurer to issue a license upon presentation of a properly completed application, or properly completed application, blanked together with tender of the appropriate licensing fee unless upon reviewed or inspection. Indicates a violation of any city ordinance or code existing at the place of business sought to be licensed. Inspections of existing residential dwelling units shall be performed in a complaint-driven basis or at the time of any new or remodel construction or change of type of land use." Well, part of the issue that you also have is SPV versus the City of Helena, and that just came down in 2014. And SPV versus the City of Helena basically said that the City of Helena does not have the right to create a building ordinance or a building code through an ordinance. And in that specific instance, what they were trying to do to look at the WUI, Urban Wildlife Interface, is basically say that they were requiring individuals, if they were going to re-roof their home, that they had to put fireproof shingles on. Well, that's a building code issue, and that is strictly prohibited by the cities or counties or towns to create a new building code. You can only adopt what is adopted by the state. And right now up in Great Falls, you have the International Property Maintenance Code, which they've been given a cease and desist order by the state because the state did not adopt that code. So you're treading on really thin water here if you go against what the state ordinances are. And if you really want to do it right, then you go to the state and you push it through the legislature because that's where the power lies. So with that, I would urge a no vote, a complete table of 15-7 and 15-8. Thank you very much.
Sir, any further comment on any item that's on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir?
Madam Chairman, members of the council, my name is Rick Linafelter, spelling the last is L-I-N-A-F-E-L-T-E-R, and I'm from the other Anaconda-type town, Black Eagle, Montana. My address is 40117th Street in Black Eagle. I am the Vice President of the Montana Landlord Association, and to save on time, our other Vice President has already summed it up, but I do urge you to take a table, 15-7 and 15-8. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other further comment on any item on tonight's agenda?
I am not a lawyer, neither is the first gentleman who spoke. He's a lobbyist. And the second gentleman who spoke obviously has vested interests in favor of landlords. But what I am is a gentleman who's rented his entire life here in Butte, also in San Diego, California, and a number of other places. I do think on 15-7, 15H, we kept on the books. Obviously, your lawyers need to take a close look at these things, as these gentlemen pointed out. But I think it is very important to have landlords have to be licensed and controlled by the city county of Butte for the protection of tenants. I've been personally in situations where landlords are able to take advantage of their renters. So I urge you to keep these communications, I believe they are called, on your books, have your lawyers look at them, and continue towards licensing.
Thank you, Kevin. Any further comment this evening on items on tonight's agenda?
My name's Dave Lester. I am one of the landlords in Butte, and I will say right now that any property that I own, I would not let anybody live in it unless I would live in it. Thing is, is you're right, there's some bad landlords in Butte and stuff, but if you read the Montana Code, that they have every right to complain and to get their places upgraded. And if you read that, what the Montana Code is, that they can be upgraded at any time, and they have three days to do it. That's how it reads in the book. I don't think Butte needs to get into it nor license landlord, or the landlords. I'm paying licenses now for my stuff, and just got to, you know, pay attention to what's going on. And people have every right to complain, and they can do it.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. Further comment?
Shirley Salmon-Yagle, landlord here in Butte. I just wanted to say this is all of the laws and the regulations that landlords have to comply with by state law. We can leave the book here. It does have a lot of information in here as to what the landlord's responsibility is as far as the rental units are concerned, and it's fully covered in the law. And just as was stated before, that if there's any changes to what's in this book that the landlords must comply with, you can take it through, try to take it through the legislative session and get it included in here or changed, if there's something in here that needs to be changed.
You can leave that, Shirley. Sure. Thank you. Any other comment? Okay, last call, seeing none. We will go on to Section 3, and appropriately, this is communication number 15-7. Brendan McDonough, Butte Silver Bow Commissioner, District 8, requesting the county attorney draft a rental property and licensing ordinance for Butte Silver Bow. Commissioner McDonough?
I'd like to make a motion to note and please unfile.
We have a motion and a second to note communication number 15-7 and place it on file. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section 4, communication number 15-8. Brendan McDonough, Butte Silver Bow Commissioner, District 8, requesting the county attorney draft a vacant property registration ordinance for Butte Silver Bow. Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I ask that we hold this in abance.
Okay. Can you do so? Commissioner McDonough, did you want to hold this in the active agenda?
In the active agenda, please.
Okay. All right, we will do that. And so this will come up again in two weeks. Section 5, communication number 15-264. Francis P. McGee, 125 West Granite Street, Butte, Montana, requesting council work with the residents in the Clark's Park area to enforce noise restrictions, prohibitions against fall from the park, and enforce the 10:00 p.m. closure time. Commissioner McDonough, this is your district, so I'll let you speak on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to request that we place this in the suspense file for three months as a review of the design documents for the splash pad show. No requirements for a noise barrier, and with the former parking rec director and the former parking rec board, they had ruled that fall was an allowable activity at Clark's Park, even though they had pursued another fall course in Butte. And Sheriff Lester's been great about enforcing the 10:00 p.m. closure time, so I think we can revisit this issue in the spring as we come closer and get a ruling from the new parking rec board members and Mr. Gallagher, our new parking rec director, on their opinion on fall and maybe some other ways that we can help curb some of the activities that not necessarily pertain with fall, but are being listed as the primary activity that's causing some of the unusual behavior in Clark's Park. So I request that the suspense file be held for three months.
Okay. We will do so. I'll move this to the suspense file to be held in abance for three months. Thank you, Commissioner McDonough. Do you want to just put that in a form of a motion? I'm sorry.
I make a motion that we place the communication 15-264 on the suspense file for three months.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Morgan, for that comment. So we have a motion and a second to move communication 15-264 to the suspense file for three months, and I'll ask Karenisa to put it back on the active agenda at that time. A question on the question?
Vote.
Commissioner Foley?
Thank you. I guess, you know, I will honor your request on this, but I guess if you look at their complaints and you look at the issues, I think they've already been resolved or at least been answered. And that's not the discount to the people who have complained here, but I'm not sure if we're just kicking this can down the road here. I mean, I guess if there's a solution, let's resolve it. If there isn't, they need to be told that. You know, putting a suspense file for three months puts us in January. The complaints will start again in the spring. You know, and I respect you as a commissioner and wanting to try to resolve this issue, but this has been brought up before. I think... to try to resolve this issue. But this has been brought up before. I think the police are doing the best that they can. I think that the issue of projectiles, fall, has been, you know, supported by not needed, you know, to ban those from the parks. And as far as noise from the splash pad, I mean, if the present board has some solution and they want to fund that, great. Let them come forth with a solution there. But that's just a thought. I guess I'm just thinking that we've been having to sit on this for quite some time. And I think the residents who signed this petition should be told upfront that, you know, we're doing the best we can. And if they're not satisfied with that, maybe they can come back with their own solution. What would they like to see to solve their concerns of noise from the splash pad? And I think that's probably where the biggest issue is. So the issue of noise in parks, I mean, I think we have current ordinances that can address it after a certain amount of hours. And it's no different to any other park that we have in this community. So I would ask you to consider that, so.
Anything further on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section 6, communication number 15-356. Kenneth and Michelle Palmer, 936 Sorelde Street, Butte, Montana, requesting council's authorization to purchase county-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy. I attended the land sales committee meeting today, and there is a letter going out to the Palmers with some mitigating procedures. And we will just wait for them to come back to us, and hopefully they will be able to work something out. The land is actually situated on some rather, well, there's some kind of gray areas, I'd say, with infrastructure and easements, and that some people have just kind of made a street where there isn't one. And so it's bringing in a lot of our department has to discuss this a little further, so it's not quite as easy to decide at the moment. So we're going to continue to hold that in advance. Section 7, communication number 15-415. Robert A. Makarowski, Director, Butte Silver Bow Land Office, requesting council's authorization for the sale of county-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy, and for council to ask the county attorney to prepare the resolution indeed for the transfer of the property. Again, this is being held in advance in this land sales committee. Today, they talked about some other features of this that are going to be hammered out with the clavicars. So we'll continue to hold that in advance. Section 8, communication number 15-443. David Schultz, Director, Butte Silver Bow Public Works Department, requesting council's authorization for a bid opening on October 7, 2015 regarding solid waste collection. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Being that we held the bid opening on October 7, I would make a motion that we place communication number 15-443 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place communication 15-443 on file. Is there anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section 9, communication 15-451. Pat Holland, Manager, Butte Silver Bow Government Buildings, requesting council's authorization for a bid opening on October 21, 2015 regarding the Business Development Center boiler replacement. We will hold that in advance until the bid opening on the 21st. Section 10, communication 15-453. Pamela Haxby-Cody, Executive Director of Butte Silver Bow Development Corp., requesting a presentation on October 14, 2015 regarding the marketing program update. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Being that we held this presentation tonight, I would make a motion that we place communication number 15-453 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place communication 15-453 on file. Is there anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section 11, communication 15-455. Karen Sullivan, Health Officer, requesting council's authorization to establish a mental health local advisory council and ask the county attorney's office to prepare a resolution. We did hear about this, and we are holding this in advance for that resolution to be prepared. Section 12, communication 15-456. Karen Burns, Director, Butte Silver Bow Community Development Department, requesting council's authorization for presentations by the recipients of the economic mill levy monies. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Being that we held these presentations tonight, again, I'd make a motion that we place communication 15-456 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place communication 15-456 on file. Is there anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Section 13, communication 15-460. Blaine Brown, 132 West Woolman, Butte, Montana, requesting council's authorization to purchase city-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy. This is a new request that is just now going into the land sales committee, so we will wait to hear from them on that. We'll hold that in advance. Excuse me. Section 14, communication number 15-461. Karen Burns, Community Development Director, requesting council's authorization to open the 2016 Economic Mill Levy Fund proposals next week on October 21, 2015. We will hold that in advance until such time that we have that opening. And lastly, is section 15, communication number 15-462. Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director, Butte Silver Bow Planning Board, requesting council authorize a public hearing regarding zone change application number 173 on October 21, 2015. And again, we will hold that till next week. At this time, at the end of our meeting, I would call for any public comment on any public matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Kevin?
Oh, Kevin Launey, 1604 Silver Bow Homes. I drove down Granite Street earlier today to see pictures of bikes painted in the middle of the street, or the cars drive. I guess these are called bike lanes. Don't really seem to be bike lanes to me. Drove down Mercury Street the other day from the Dumars Brothel. That's not where I was, but from the Dumars Brothel to Main Street. And noticed the angle parking lanes have been put in, which is well and great, but all the same lines still exist. People are still thinking it's a two-lane, and they're confused. And they're flying down in the right-hand lane until they come to a car, screeching to a halt and going around a dangerous situation. Same thing exists on Galena Street. In front of my T-shirt says, "Change required on Uptown," or "Change Required," and on the back says, "On Uptown Butte Bike Lanes." And I think it's a ridiculous thing. You know, it's on a hill. It snowed over most of the year. There's not enough room for bikes. We're not in Missoula. People in Butte don't like, ride bikes. We spend a lot of money studying this issue from outsiders, sources, to spend money on implementing this. And again, I think you're just, you're taxing long-term Butte residents at their expense. They're paying for things that are supposed to be attracting people from the outside. This is not going to attract anybody. And again, you're going to be taxing the current residents out of their houses with all these plans to attract outsiders to come in here and change our culture and our values. Do I have any time left?
Floor's yours, Kevin.
Separate issue. I know you've talked about it. I hope you will take action. As you could see, I'm in ill health. Because of that, I walk on a regular basis on the beautiful new fish pond down by Incat there, which I love extensively. It's a great place. It's kept up very well. There is one problem, though, and it's really the ignorance of people. And I was there one day, and I saw six different parties of people with dogs of various different numbers, all of which were not on a leash, jumping in and out of that pond, coming out, shaking off, getting you all wet. Walked by a little boy who was trying to fish. I said, "How's the fishing going?" "Not very good. The dogs keep scaring the fish away." It's a problem. I don't know if you can put up further signage. There is one small sign that says, "No dogs allowed in the water," but it lists other things also on that sign. So maybe a bigger sign, maybe fencing off the area. And part of the problem is the actual dog area that's supposed to be for the dogs is above that, so they have to pass by that area to get to it. So anyway, just a problem I think could be addressed. Pam Cody was talking about transportation. Our bus line, city buses do not run into the evening. And I will be writing up a communication to suggest that just the route that goes from Montana Tech all the way down Harrison Avenue service the service workers on Harrison Avenue to get back and forth from work, because they don't work 8 to 5 anymore, so they can ride the bus back and forth from work. And people can attend classes in the evenings up at Montana Tech. Now, if you're looking at employing people, I think that's one easy way to bring further employment to Butte. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kevin.
God bless.
Any else to come before us this evening?
Make the motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.